This layout stays depending on how we go, but so that, you know, the kids would park in the parking lot first and then go to the street like they do now. But to us, the big plus for the city is that those 22 spaces are available pretty much after 5 o'clock every day.
But I have an issue because that's a hill coming up, coming up Third Street. So if somebody's backing out there...
So what we have there is kind of the way I've shown it is there's really a lane and a half of back out into space that is the existing parallel parking and sidewalk that you would be able to turn into and then pull into traffic because your traffic lane is really out there past where those dotted lines are because of that's where the existing parallel parking is. And there would still be parallel parking from where I show that last space to the corner of Merchant and Third. So that is kind of the perceived lane of traffic out there. So you'd be able to back along the street, you know, without being fully in into traffic.
People don't do that though. They back out the middle of the line.
Me.
You know, 32 and 6 feet.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Did you talk to any of the, I mean, Mr. Applips there and then the Kunsols? And have you talked to any of them about changing that?
No, we haven't talked to anybody at all. We just...
Up the sandbar, no businesses? I mean, I know it's going to improve parking, but...
Yeah.
I mean, that's the street they live on, you know? I mean, that makes...
I mean, they...
Their opinion should count.
They could probably use it at night, I would suppose, couldn't you? I mean, if it was, if there's space, you can use it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, half the street's Ward 1 and half the street's Ward 2, right?
How is that...
Doesn't Third Street, doesn't Third Street split half-streets Ward 1, half-streets Ward 2? It's all mine?
So you're saying eliminate what, the 6?
Yeah, there's 6 parallel parking.
6 and you're going to gain how many?
22 total. So there's 22 new spaces would be a net gain of 16.
Okay.
Is that, yeah, that's right.
And how are you going to survey this for safety? I mean, I know you say, oh, well, they're going to back out slow and they have all these lanes and yada, 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 but you know what I mean? Like, how are you going to have, are you going to have it surveyed for safety or...
Please, Chief. Just ask Eric.
Well, I, I really, they've never been backing out on the other flags. I'm actually maybe even a little bit familiar to have even a little bit more room.
I was trying to back out of Rosier or someplace.
Well, but there, you're coming from a stop sign either way. We're here.
No, we did park on parallel.
Well, I think the only thing is the sharp side is...
Yeah. Because of the hill. And, you know, we can, we'd like to keep as much of that vegetation there. There's...
On the corner?
On the corner. So we may end up losing one more parking space to keep a little more of that. But, you know, this was just a...
You know, you could put up a sign like they do sometimes when there's a blind hill coming into a stoplight. There's a sign to warn you, stoplight coming. You could maybe put up something that...
Traffic?
Saying...
Watcher.
Yeah. Parking.
Well, what is the speed limit? 20 is the speed limit.
20.
Any road that's not marked, right?
And you could say that, but that doesn't mean that everybody's going to drive 20.
Hey, I know Third Street, remember? They were probably doing 100.
Yeah, not very far from there.
Remember that?
Yeah.
You never know. You never know.
And so maybe the, I guess the, we should take it under consideration, but maybe is there information, more information he could provide that would help you make your decision? I mean, you mentioned safety, but it's just...
The increased parking spaces is possible.
So you'd like for him to contact the property owners in that street?
Yes, definitely. Definitely.
Want to consult with Eric and get his opinion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Even if you have to take a couple of those off just so you have a little bit, like when somebody pops up over that hill?
Mm-hmm.
You know? Because once you come up on the hill, you can't really see a whole lot.
Well, we can go measure the site distance.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I think that's a good idea.
The speed limit, there shouldn't be an issue if there's traffic.
But even, you know...
I know, I know, but I'm saying if.
Recommended sight line changes based on the posted speed line.
Yeah, and so that if you're going to do a safety, you know, if you're going to have an engineer do a study on it, they would base it on the speed limit.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
That's where all the wrecks has been happening.
Intersections or what?
You can't really, it's difficult to add a stop sign there.
Yeah.
Have we ever considered making Merchant Street a one-way up through there?
That's not an issue.
Ever heard of it?
It has been, hasn't it?
Merchant's here?
Yeah. Make it Merchant a one-way all the way up through there.
That's been discussed.
How would that affect the buses?
It was discussed.
We don't use it hardly ever.
Do you remember that? When it was discussed, Buck?
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's been a couple of years.
How many buses do you...
Well, we, we don't go through this.
Two, two buses.
Do you, do you come across the parking lot, the desert in the evening?
Yeah, yeah.
You have two buses?
We got two, yeah.
Two? Okay.
And they come out of there and they make a ride on Jeff Greenhill, left on Third and went down to Washington and go up the school.
Okay. Okay. You're going to contact property, somebody's going to contact property owners.
Mm-hmm.
We'll talk to Eric. We will measure the site distance and we'll come back with those three pieces of information and ask the board either to nod yes or say no at that, at that time. And we'll, can you, can you get those contacts done in the next two weeks?
Um, I don't know. We probably want to wait. We're kind of, this was more of a preliminary. We just want to know, you know, if it was a possibility. Because we may wait, because we want to make sure we get a final that this is the plan we want because...
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and, and I'll talk to the chief of police and we'll go out and scale the site distance and we'll be ready for you whenever you want them.
Great. All right. Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Good luck.
Okay. The next item on the agenda has to do with the road bids we got for Porta Street. And I originally anticipated it just being a question of which way do you want to go? Since then, we've had discussions, reviewed the budget, and we've had discussions on street tree replacement and asphalt replacement. And so the committee is not prepared to make a recommendation on all of the street trees, but I passed out this sheet, which is the ones that we had on the left-hand side where it says trees that we would definitely eliminate or that said to eliminate. Those are the ones that we're talking about doing and not replacing, going ahead and finishing it with the exposed aggregate. That matches the kind of, if you went around here and found these trees on, on these, you would see that the committee's conclusion without having this knowledge was essentially the same thing.
Oh, really?
So it matches up with those, those trees.
Really?
Yeah. So I think we're safe to proceed with this without fear of having a later recommendation coming from the tree committee that kind of contradicts what we've already done.
I like that.
And I'm proposing that we go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
Which, which kind of raises the next question. We, the Porta Street bids came in kind of about where we expected them to. You will recall that when we did our budget last year, we decided that we would have to use a portion of our cash carryover to fund the anticipated public works improvements or transportation improvements. And while we did that, we didn't actually make that budget entry. We didn't take it out of the general revenue and put it over into transportation. So it's still kind of sitting over there in the general revenue fund. So Sue did this breakdown for you.
Did you get this?
Yeah, I passed you out. Well, wait a minute. No, Sue's breakdown is in the packet.
Is it?
This breakdown is Dave's.
Is it this one?
It's not.
No.
It's not in the packet.
Where is it?
I didn't have it.
Okay.
Do you...
I do have it.
I don't know.
I have it, it's in my office. I thought it was in the packet. Uh, that's it. We should get it.
Out of this pack right here.
There you go.
It's in there.
Them's at our places.
Yeah, it's in there, yes. Do you need an extra one? I got one, I got it.
So it tells you that we, that we budgeted the $476,912 that we spent on Westwood and Market Street, the, well, we haven't finished Market Street, but we spent on Westwood and solving some of Mrs. Ross's problems in the engineering on Porta, $183,434. Which leaves us a balance of $293,477 out of the street department infrastructure fund. We haven't done anything with the general fund. So if we, when we finish paying Market Street and if we do the budget, the Porta Street concrete option, we will have to move $49,436 from our general revenues fund over into the transportation infrastructure to cover all those costs. And we haven't replaced any streets yet, or the sidewalks yet.
Right.
So the purpose of this discussion, well, I mean, we made one more statement. We're able to use $14,636 out of the cemetery fund to pay a portion of the stormwater improvements that were made at the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
All right? So that, that gives us that $34,800 overage. Anything we spend on sidewalks today, and that's the budget figure that Dave provided, the $7,170, will do these, these sidewalks, we think are the high priority ones. So we would end up having $41,970 that would be coming out of general revenue.
You're talking about the trees on those sidewalks?
These trees.
Yeah. And that, that whole place?
Cost $7,170.
Right, okay, yeah.
Which is on this budget estimate that Dave provided back when we were doing our budget.
Okay.
That is a little high because of the fact I don't know about, replace electric, electric comes out. So it's a tad bit, I'm not, you know, but that's a good figure to go by.
What are they putting in there?
Pardon me?
What are they going to replace the trees with?
None of it. This is the, this is going to be...
Just sidewalk, good.
So it's 40 yards of concrete and labor and some fitting, you know, some stuff with rock, agri.
So was any of the downtown businesses on Main Street asked about the trees? Because I don't see any of them eliminated.
Well, that's part of this larger project.
You mean the new Main Street?
Yeah.
We didn't, no, we didn't, we didn't, the committee didn't consider the new part of Main Street. They thought it was fine.
What we're talking about there is just...
But the only one we may disagree with...
A real big one.
Right there on the corner.
That one down by Station 2 in the little park area.
There's trip hazards on Main Street?
Yeah.
I thought there was.
Right there at the corner by Station 2.
Complaining to me. I went down with their complaint.
Right there on the corner by Station 2 and across...
Well, that tree, we are the one I think we disagree, the committee and they disagree on and we'll...
Well, that's cut, that's nicked up or tucked up in that area behind the bench.
We're talking about the newer part, we're talking about the newer part of Main Street.
Yeah.
So, but I guess the question for discussion here is whether it is your recommendation for us to proceed with this work with the knowledge that, you know, we're going to be taking $41,000 out of our anticipated kind of cash at the end of the year? And right now, it looks like that's going to be slightly over $100,000. And that's Sue's prediction. $140,000. So we'd be bringing that $140,000 down to right at $100,000. There are no other surprises between now and the end of the year.
At the end of the year is fiscal year.
Fiscal year, in the next three months.
Replace 21 trees? And 71,000? Dave, you got to replace 21 trees at $70 on your $71,000 bid?
That was, actually, that $7,000 was part of the, I think it was like 17 trees or whatever at that time. That was the whole thing.
Okay.
So it won't be that. And we're not replacing any trees and we're doing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 locations.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's going to be a lot less than $7,000.
That's going to change, you know? Like I say, that's a little high, but if we do have to replace electric and stuff in there, then that's, you know...
Well, we're not going to do the boards around the trees. We're not going to replace the trees. So you're talking about $5,000, give or take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, I shot that a little high because, you know, just in case someone would come up.
Now, in addition to, one more thing. We, we still have the Aikens issue where the water's, you know, pond's kind of on the house side of the sidewalk as it finds its way through the sea channel.
You know, it's not just them. There's a lot of people on Market Street said that their drains have been plugged.
Well, I haven't talked to anybody, but Aikens, Joe Kirsten has the rental house and we're taking care of that problem with a sump pump. And Roth is having the basement, water getting into her basement. And to satisfy Ms. Aikens, the, we, what she wants us to do is put in drains on the house side of the sidewalk that tie into the storm sewer. And that's $8500 for, to put a area inlet at the, at the east corner of her house and a flared-in section on the, on the west corner and tie them into the, to the storm sewer.
Who said, who, who took those drain, who said that they could no longer drain into the drainage?
She said there were drains there that were eliminated in the flood of '93. We instructed the contractor that when he was removing the pipe, if he found any connections to the old pipe, to notify the engineer so that we could...
Connect them in.
Figure out how to reconnect them. He says he didn't find anything going through there. She says he was not telling the truth. I, I don't know.
It just seems like now we have these drainage problems.
He did find them other places and told us about them and we, and we addressed the issue. On the Joe Kirsten, he didn't find it. And that's because it wasn't connected to the storm sewer. It was connected to the sanitary sewer.
Ooh.
So we're going to repipe that one so it's, it's, it goes into a sump and then is discharged onto the ground and gets its way into the, into the storm sewer. But that's a, and that's true, you know, that's probably true all over town, particularly in the older areas where that's what you did. Piped that stuff into the sanitary sewer and dilution was the answer to pollution. Ms. Ross's problem, we still have to address, I think. She's still getting water in her basement. She wants us to take out this old pipe that we filled full of concrete. And I'm going to have to convince her that that pipe can't be the source of the water.
Yeah.
What, what is the source is that the old storm sewer that ran up her property was leaking, was porous. And the groundwater that would build up in her lot would find its way into that storm sewer and get into the sewer at the street. So she never got any ground pressure. It was constantly relieving the ground pressure. We took it out. That water didn't have an outlet anymore. And it builds up around her foundation and finds its way through the cracks and crevices and gets into her basement. I think the solution to that, the only solution I can think of, is to put a perimeter drain in, tie it into the sump and, and, you know, have a rake out the basement floor. You put in a drain tile, you put it into a sump pit, and then you pump it out to the outside.
Wouldn't you just put in a dehumidifier?
No, it's...
It's more...
You know, it gets up, she gets, it's not, she gets water in her basement.
It's like what we have in the basement here.
Yeah. But I don't know, I haven't gotten an estimate for that, but it's, you know, it's going to be $5,000 or more. So we're looking at another $13,000 if we're just going to address these problems in a way that satisfies the property owners. I didn't, you told me last time, solved Ms. Aikens' problem. When, when it became $8,500, I, I thought I better step back and talk to you before, before I proceeded.
How much is that the engineer paying for?
Well...
I mean, that's just poorly engineered from day one, that whole project.
I can't disagree with any of that. The contractor installed it as, as it was designed and approved by, by the state and whoever was here before, so...
The Roth one, I mean, I don't know that an engineer could have foreseen what was happening if this is what...
No, but how far did they dig when they dug that last time? Did they dig all the way out to the sidewalk?
Which last time?
This last time when they dug up the pipe.
Yeah, they dug to the sidewalk.
They dug all the way to sidewalk? Why didn't they put a drain tile in then when they dug it all up?
They dug it up to where they capped it. So when, before they put the sidewalk in, when they were replacing that drain, they poured a concrete cap in each end of the pipe that remained in the ground. And so as they were removing it, they took out the pipe until they got to the last, to the cap out by the sidewalk. So they weren't actually abutting the sidewalk, they were several feet in. But it was just a solid block of concrete at that point.
I mean, that...
They didn't know they needed to...
That one we were, that one we were damned if we did, we did. I mean, we left the pipe in and it, it filled up and went in her basement. And we take it out and it filled up and went in the basement, or went in her basement. So I, I think we were, I don't know that anybody could have foreseen what was going to happen on that one.
I, I, you know, honestly, there were so many things going on in her yard, so many drains coming from, there's still drains coming from places that we have no idea where it's coming from, but we went ahead and tied it into the new sewer just because we knew it was a drain. But it's coming off Boslar Hill from somewhere. I don't know. Lots of, lots of things going on there that, there were at least, and she, by her count, there were at least eight pipes tied into that sewer drain that weren't shown on any plans or anything. And it was just done over the years, you know, as people did things. But yeah, I, I, we took out that, that last pipe because that's what she wanted done. I mean, and, and since, and I don't want to point fingers at anybody. I don't want to hear. We started this project, I became aware that we did not have the easement down her, her property. Nobody ever mentioned it to me. And that goes back years ago, so. So I went knocking on her door, kind of begging, you know? And she was very cooperative and everything went real well. But here she is with this pipe that she didn't know anything about. And I come in at the last minute asking her to be cooperative and she agrees and she's just had one issue after another as a consequence of it. So I really feel somewhat obligated here. And so when she asked us to take out that pipe, it was a $10,000 project. Well, we were already under our estimate on that project, so I felt safe doing that. But that pretty well put us back to where we budgeted, so any dollar we spend now is more than we had planned. But I still think we owe her some...
I think so too.
And, and I think the solution, although I'm not convinced it will totally satisfy her, her, her partner and her son, I think, agree that the solution is this perimeter drain. She wants me to take out the pipe that's now full of concrete, which will be another $10,000. And I don't think it'll solve her problem. And that's why I'm afraid to do it. And she's still having water getting into her basement.
Good question.
So what are we going to do?
Well, it's...
We're going to do that perimeter drain, I think?
You think that's going to work? The perimeter drain?
Catch whatever water.
Why do we have to take that pipe out then?
I don't, I don't think we have to. I'm not, I'm proposing we don't take the pipe out.
I don't think so. I mean, if it's concrete, there's no reason for...
It's just a concrete, it's concrete.
I mean, I don't think it's doing anything.
Have we consulted with any dry basement people?
Not yet.
Where we're planning on maybe talking to somebody?
My last conversation with her was about, she called me and said, I got water in my basement again. This was over the weekend. And I called the engineer and I said, you know, she's still got the problem and said what I've told you basically is the groundwater and this system. And she said, I don't, I don't want that pipe. I want that pipe out of the ground. I don't trust that concrete that's in it.
Well, something like that, I think we just have to stand up and look.
You think if we take the pipe out now, it's going to solve your problem? Well, I don't know, but I hope so. And so I, I don't think it's going to. So I'd rather do something that I think is going to solve the problem.
Yeah.
It's closed on both ends of the drain.
It's full of concrete.
Just before we jump out there...
Cap it and they put a flowable fill into it. It's just thin concrete, so it flows, you know, and they just, it, it dealt us all.
Before we step out and do our in-house engineered perimeter drain, we should at least get some consultation with some basement people.
Oh, yeah, I'll have to get somebody who knows how to do it.
I would imagine that will be, end up being the best result or the best choice. But, you know, if we spend the money and it doesn't work...
Somebody who does that for a living will need to go down there and say, this is what you need to do to solve this problem, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
And I'm not, you know...
But I'm sure it's like everything else, the unknown where the water's fully coming from.
Well, we know exactly where it's coming from. We know we, we have the point where it's coming from.
Okay.
And, and her, her son went in and took a drill through the basement floor. Water came shooting out. It's just the water coming up from the ground. And so he, he knocked out a hole and put a bucket in it and got a little portable pump in it. And, and it was, it was, it was working, but it couldn't keep up with the water that was coming in. So it just needs to be a bigger, more substantial solution.
So how much is the city willing to spend once you try something and it doesn't fix it? So do we put a amount on there that the city's willing to spend? Or we just keep spending more money, more money to kind of fix these problems? I mean, what are you up to now? $18,000?
You mean when?
With both.
From, got $8,500 for Roth and some amount of money. I spent $10,000 for, to remove the old pipe that she thought was causing the problems. So $18,500 after we, if we put in the area drains for Ms. Roth, for Ms. Aikens. And then this would be another, I don't know, problem.
So if that doesn't fix it, we're looking at more money?
That one fixed it. I don't know what to, what else to do.
Oh, shit. And Dave pointed out that we use wood, you said?
Wood's basement service to do the basement air.
And that, and it worked for here.
Sue, Sue used them at her house, and she said it's working.
Where are they from?
St. Louis.
I think the next step is just to get some bids on that and see what type of guarantees they offer so we do have an endpoint in sight.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Because I know what...
How do you want to proceed on this, uh...
Aikens?
Aikens.
I will say in '93, when she said that the city wanted to block them drains, we did not, we were busy doing other things. Like what the city didn't go to her house and block that drain.
We just can't get into he said, she said with her. I mean, we've got the responsibility that, that the project has created a problem for. And we've gotta figure out how to fix it as cost effective as possible. But I don't see how we get out of, take care of it, we have to take care of it.
Okay, well, I did-
I mean, is anybody, I mean-
I think we should take care of it.
We gotta do it right. I mean, probably some way we could do it, you know? All right, so I'll, uh, order Clifton to come back in and get those put in. We'll have to change order on his contract and work over that. The, uh, and then I'll tell him it's, uh, Roth, if we're gonna investigate a interior perimeter drain. And I'll get a contact with Woods or a qualified contractor to come in and evaluate what needs to be done there. Okay.
Martin, can I interrupt you momentarily on trees and get a, a one-minute update? I apologize if I missed-
This list of trees that you have, it's on the left side, are the, are the nine that we think need to be tended to and put in the exposed access walk? And it matches the, the trees that we identified at committee meeting, so there's no conflict.
That's all I saw, it was interesting. Good enough, thank you.
I'll let the mayor cover this one.
Mississippi Line is changing their entrance. I believe they're having their employees come in up before they're up on the highway. And this, and they wanna put this sign, we own, if you see that second page, that is highlighted in red, "We own that property." And you can see on the X there, right by that 312, they wanna put this sign there. And they want permission to put this sign there. That's basically all they're asking. They will, they're saying that they would buy it, buy the property, lease the property.
Yeah.
Or we just let them put it there. They, they did say that they would gladly mow the property, but we didn't have to mow it anymore. Uh, they take care of mowing it, they're gonna put the sign there. They're just asking permission to put the sign there. They're prepared, prepared to do whatever they need to do.
Said they're right on the corner of the market?
Yeah, right by-
They gave that to us to start with, didn't they?
No, it's not on the corner.
Well, it's, you know, it's in that triangle.
Yeah, they, they gave that to us to start with years ago.
I think we should trade them for about 200 fire tags every year for an opportunity to place a sign on city property. And being a little smart, but, uh, I mean, really, who cares? This, that's a good thing for them, it looks, gonna look good.
It's gonna be better for traffic.
They do good work with their signage. Yeah.
They're gonna want to keep us from ordering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We may want a road out over, over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are they dealing with MoDOT any on this? I mean, that's a disaster up here in the mornings and evenings with all them trucks that can't get in now since they put all them gates and your employees. Everyone's gotta swipe the car to get in.
They back up, they gotta queuing.
Huh?
They have, they back up while they're swiping, is that what happens?
Yeah, and the semis is parked out there in the lane of traffic.
What, what time?
I wonder if they would consider putting like a turning lane there?
What time does that happen?
You know what I mean, on 61?
A lot of times, early in the mornings.
They want to send their employees at that new address.
Well, I know, but I don't know, as soon as school starts again, I have no idea what they're gonna do.
You know what I mean, right in here?
With school buses and everything, it's horrible.
Wanted to get pictures of that, would it be like 7:30 in the morning or 3:00?
Uh, it'd probably be between, probably about 7:15 is probably when it starts.
Probably 6:30, 7:30.
No, you think?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe they could even just put like, on their own, put like a turning lane where they can clear out some of that.
You just got more trucks coming in and it's, it's just horrible.
That's a more odd issue, I mean, if it's-
Might check with Don also, Don Pritchard, we were talking about it before the meeting. The times, he said it's the last two days, he saw it pretty bad.
Real bad, yeah.
I, uh, generally gone by the time I get through there, quarter to eight.
Mm-hmm, oh yeah, it's done already, long gone.
They're gonna start sending the workers and that other new-
I know, but they all gotta swipe individually, they can't just drive in.
Yeah, I realize that, they just haven't too much stuff stolen walking out, that's why they're doing it.
It's basic security for most big mines or-
So do we need to contact MoDOT to investigate that, or?
I'd like to.
Dr. Lonkell?
We'll get some pictures, I can send them to MoDOT.
Our Mississippi Line.
Here's, here's what's happening.
Are we, are we all right? They mow it, they have their sign there?
I agree, everybody agree.
How, how high or what, is it gonna, is it gonna block any vision?
Well, that's a good question. They'll have to stay out of the highway right away.
Be off the highway right away?
Yeah.
It says 12 foot by 8 foot, that's what the sign says.
But where do you call, when you pull up to make the stop sign, where do you, versus their sign?
Into the street, signs back here, far in the back. Like any Mo-, like any sign, you can't just put a sign on MoDOT right away, you gotta be setback, and it's probably they hold the right away.
I don't know what their setback is, but we have to setback somewhere here.
So it's gonna be in conjunction with the-
It would be behind the MoDOT right away.
Sign that's there now for the, what is that sign there?
What, the one in the park?
Yeah.
That's a, what is that, something?
That's a landmark, that's a marker.
John, they're way at the catty corner, they're, they're in this little triangle.
Yeah, they're over here.
They're way over here.
Up here, this is Market Street.
And they're gonna have to be off the right away.
Be back in here.
Well, here's one.
So who owns the big sign in front of the, the City Line?
The Big Blue House sign? I was told that whoever the lady was that was with the family that owned the company, she, she had that sign installed, because she'd be active in the Blue Duke House. It needs some work.
Yeah. Maybe they had to do something about it.
I don't know who owns it.
I say, uh-
They, uh, repaint it or something.
Mention that too.
Because it is looking pretty dangerous.
And, did you touch up that sign?
Touch that sign up a little.
Yeah.
Uh, finally, um, the bids on, on Porter Street came in. We had them build an alternate asphalt or concrete. Joe Kirsch was the low bidder in both cases. Um, the question is, which one do you want to go? Uh, the comment I'd like to make about asphalt is that, you know, asphalt, we've had this discussion many times, the, the quality of asphalt is directly proportional to the quality of the base. So the engineer has designed it to be adequate base, but it required you to over excavate in order to create the base for the asphalt, which you don't have to do with concrete. If you start doing it in asphalt, you may run into a situation like we did on Westwood, where they were digging down and they got some bad soils, and you gotta stop and bring in good stuff and take out the bad stuff, and that costs you an extra. I don't know what's under that street, it may not happen. But if it did, these bids would end up being the same.
10,000 wouldn't be enough.
Maybe, I, I just don't know.
I agree, concrete is the way to go, I think.
Martin, did somebody from ready next come talk to you last week? Larry?
About?
Anyway, they contacted me, I told them to talk to you. They said they're willing to reduce the price of concrete so that, kinda help us out to get started doing more streets in concrete.
Oh, that's nice of them.
So they're, they're willing-
No, I would remember that.
Well, but they're willing to, uh, lower their price a little bit to help us out.
You know, I, I, yeah, but that, I don't know how that would translate here, except maybe it would. I mean, I-
The thing is with asphalt, you know, and I'm, I look at-
You have to install a price.
You look at Rosewood Street, it's only what, three years old? And it's got cracks in it already. Main Street's got cracks in it already. The asphalt is just cracking up.
Well, there's no question.
I'm just bringing it to your attention, just, you know, sure to say it to you.
And you, you put the sealer on those cracks eventually?
Yeah, but we shouldn't have to do that in three years.
No, I agree.
It's less than 5% of the total. There's an increase, I just think concrete-
Yeah.
Well, we need also to see what they do per yard, if they deal on it.
Well, I, I, I'd like to get that information, and then I'd like to know what price was quoted in per yard. I don't have any way of knowing that by looking at their bid, because it's an installed price, so.
Right.
I can have to guess, I can, I could guess, but, you know, I'm sure Joe Kirsch, if we, if we got, if we got consideration, and they would give, we told Joe Kirsch, we could, we could work out a negotiated deal.
They did a good job in Westwood.
Oh yeah.
It's, it's a nice street.
They could come.
Either way.
So you're, all right, so let, here's the other idea that occurred to the mayor is, um, you know, we're, we're running tight here on our public- overall, our budget is in good shape. And, and overall, we're gonna end up with some balance at the end of the year. Unless Dave goes crazy.
He won't.
We all look at Dave.
He wants to.
How much chemical, how much mosquito chemical are you gonna have to add?
I'll have enough.
You want to buy any?
Uh.
You got enough for this year?
Yes.
All right, we'll see, there you go. That's an item that he's under right now, that'll kinda help address some of these issues. The, um, but one possibility is that the contractor's bid is good for 90 days. And, you know, if we like wait 60 days to actually begin the project, the payment for this would be in next budget.
What's, what's the reason to wait?
Just to get into the next budget cycle, to, till we can do some things today and kinda feel better about where we stand in the end of the next. But you know, you're either paying it on one side of the line or you're paying on the other side.
I'd rather get started on it.
All right.
Oh yeah, I agree.
And let's get it in before winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, lots of good consideration, you know, but, but, of course, if you do it in, in September, you're still way ahead of the bad weather. Okay, I will, uh- You, you have on your agenda tonight, uh, both, both contracts, or?
No.
Oh, you didn't do it that well, you had it for the contract?
We talked about it. We, we, we put it on there for the, um, the engineers, the con, the engineers' recommendation, which is the concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, if you wanted to change it.
It's worth the money.
Where do we end up on the sign for Mississippi Line?
We're gonna tell them, we're gonna have to do a little agreement, so we can hold their feet to the fire if they don't cut the grass. Uh, but we'll just, I'll do a little inner- A letter of intent that says you can do this and you'll do that. Uh, Sue prepared a tentative schedule for the budget. She would like for us to agree that this schedule's good, or amend it however you want to amend it. Uh, I recall from our last budget cycle that you'd like a little more time to meet with the department heads than I gave you last time we did it, so you can go over some of the details of their budgets. Right now, we've got budget work sections starting sometime in August, and we didn't put a, a date in, but it can start anytime after August the 5th. And we can spend the entire August and first week of September, meeting with department heads if you want to. But is this schedule amenable to you?
To, to. Yeah.
Are we gonna have a work session on any of this?
No.
Oh, when you what?
Well, I think with all the problems coming up in our streets and sidewalks, we need to go back to maybe every other year on new police cars instead of two new ones every year.
We can do that?
Well, it's a discussion, yeah, that's what the-
I mean, we're getting rid of them.
That's what the budget process is all about.
Yeah, all right.
We're getting rid of them at 50, 60,000 miles, I think we need to run them at least 100, 125,000. For the, for the little bit of difference you're gonna-
Follow this young man.
That'd be a good discussion, yeah?
In that budget time, yeah. That's fine.
You know, I, I, from personal, it's my, I don't know, fraction of what you know about cars, but from my personal experience, you're right, you don't-
Well, Farmington's still running theirs, how long they been running theirs? Their blue ones, oh my goodness.
You should buy two new ones every year, I thought you bought four new ones this year.
Do you have more on the, this work session agenda?
That's it. And now, we relax in anticipation for the official board of all of them.
Let me know.
Did you ever talk to Ms. Martin? Did you see anything about her property or over there on, is she on Weiner?
Yes, Dave and I both went out and she said it's different. He's not aware, and I didn't see any change in the uphill conditions that would cause her to get any more or less than she got in the past. I just couldn't see, want anything there. So we talked to her and she's been nice to us.
Mm-hmm.
Conversation, we just couldn't, she was so just- Without putting in a big curb that would deflect it off of hers and throw it on somebody else's.
Of course, I am.
Up on Weiner, she was, she got water in her basement the first time in her recollection. And, uh-
You got a lot of rain.
We tried to figure out if there was anything that happened up the top of the hill that would cause her to get more water than she ever had before. There had been people-
A lot of people's got water in their basements this time and never ever, with all the rain.
Is. So, uh, yes, I just couldn't offer a solution, because there wasn't one.
And I have another question too. Right down the course, the corner on the Valley House, right there on the corner by the church and valley. You don't, isn't that somebody watching there? There's water pumping out to the street from Valley House.
So.
Is that what it is?
You get water out, or probably not, it's either the last or just the water, give it a location.
Another thing, are you, is Bear ever over here, the engineer?
When they call him, I mean, we'll be-
I mean, when he comes down, do you have him located 61 and Chadwell Lane?
Nope. It was this, this?
I have all that, I have everything that was in the packet, but was that your place?
I think we can come up with some kind of a different approach. Make a landing.
Here, Tom, Tom's not here.
When the fire chief took the ladder truck out of, of working order, or put it off at his side, covered with dust or whatever, shouldn't he have pu- approached the board, the mayor, city administrator, before he'd done anything like that? I mean, is it his call to put a piece of equipment out of service? He could do that.
Well, if it doesn't meet the inspection requirements, he couldn't have it in service.
Who was the mechanic that classified it as being out of shape, or whatever you wanna call it?
I don't know.
See, that's the part that I can't understand.
Who, who was the mayor would be more qualified to, to do, to make that decision?
A mechanic, not him. He's not a mechanic.
I, I don't think we're talking about a mechanical issue here. I know the pump test failed, if I, if I recall those reports correctly.
Well, I heard a lot of other things like the cracked frame or whatever, but-
But, you know, we're going by what was, was said or what was reported to us. And if it's unsafe, it wouldn't be any different than our police chief doing the same thing with some of his equipment or some of his, uh, or our, same way with, with Dave Pinkley. If he has a piece of equipment that is not safe, I would believe it would be up to his responsibility to take it out of service. I don't think he would look for the board to prove it.
Well, to, you know, to a certain degree, but you, he'd take it out of service, but he should get somebody-
But they still used it.
That's qualified, is what I'm, is what I'm getting at. All right, we'll get off of that issue for right now. There's a lot of people who I wanna talk to, so I'm not gonna tie it up. But one other question I have right now is, is there an ordinance that says the mayor should appoint a fire chief every year? I, I believe there's an ordinance, and I, I don't ever remember where you appointed him as fire chief. You better look up the ordinance.
Okay.
There is an ordinance. Now, I'll leave, I'll leave the rest of the stuff that I have to say until later on when I get a little bit more, what I wanna do and let you get on with your meeting. And I appreciate the time to talk with you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Martin, would you report?
As you know, we put signs up. Uh, I talked to the superintendent of the schools and the chairman of the board authority about removing duplicate signs and got permission from them to go ahead and take down the ones that we replaced. And we haven't done that yet, but we, uh, we have their permission. What he talked about in the work session, the bids on Porter Street, for those who are tuning in, uh, the Porter Street replacement project, the low bidder was Joe Kirsch's contractors. And the board is, prefers the concrete over the asphalt. And the bid price is 180,593 dollars and 70 cents. And, uh, we will be preparing a ordinance for the board for our, our next meeting to proceed with that work. Oh, it's on this agenda, excuse me, stay tuned, it's on this agenda. The, uh, MoDOT is anxious for us to get going on the, uh, design of the trail because we're kinda behind schedule. Recall that the church is approved to cooperate with that. Uh, if we put the road, the trail on, on, on the east side of the, of the drainage ditch, the, uh, air engineering went out with us and took a look at it and tried to figure out kinda how, what we needed to do to make sure that that would work. And so they've been doing some field surveying, checking elevations to, uh, not to design the road, but to determine that a road in that area could be properly designed. Uh, one of the questions has to do with the intersection with Parkwood, or I'm sorry, Progress Parkway, uh, and whether we have the 300 feet of site distance that would be required, because you're coming out right on this hill. So, investigations going forward, uh, but we need to accelerate it because I, I really need to be more responsive to, to MoDOT's concerns on, on timing of this project. The, um, comprehensive plant steering committee, uh, kinda met for the last time until we get the survey done. We have completed a survey, uh, that I intended to distribute, and I got it here. It's in your packet?
Yeah.
Uh, the, uh, I took the opportunity of attending, attending Rotary Club, of having them fill it out just to see how it works in terms of timing. So the Rotary Club has been the first group to fill it out. Took about 15 minutes, a little longer, for them to, to fill out the survey. Uh, I asked those who filled it out if they had any recommendations for changes, and they said no, they thought it was a good survey. Uh, CMO is gonna put it on the internet using, uh, Survey Monkey, which I think is a strange name, but, uh, it's a service that's kinda everybody knows about. So people will be able to go online to fill it out. And we plan to distribute it in places where people gather. And then to take it around, as I'm going around town, to going to meetings and getting people to fill it out and getting the board members to do that. So, uh, the survey is about to be, about to hit the streets, and we'll see how, uh, what kind of response rate- what kind of response rate we can get. We talked about the waste issue at, uh, in Bill Best. I had the local manager of CWI come out and take a look at it, uh, for two reasons. One, to make sure it was appropriate material for the transfer station, and, uh, he also said he was gonna check with his superiors to see, and kinda maybe there was some way in which they could participate to assist us, so I'm kinda waiting to hear from him right now on, on, on that before I do anymore. Uh, and, and I talked to him yesterday again, so he, he, he should be getting a response pretty soon. Uh, the tree committee met, but I think we'll wait and let Tom talk about it. That is the legislative liaison. Um, the, uh, Levy District Meeting, there was a kinda interesting discussion. Uh, you all are aware that the river kinda came up really quickly, uh, and so there was some hustling some, Sunday to, a week ago, to get the gates closed and, and, and we had to wait for the railroad to tell us, come in and remove their tracks, and that wasn't happening quickly enough to get the gate closed. So, Mayor and I attended the Levy District Meeting to kinda discuss the protocol for who gets to decide and, you know, how to make sure the timing's right, and the Levy District Board seemed to think that things normally went pretty well, and this was kind of a exception to the, to the rule. We expressed concern about, you know, letting the exception be the rule because the consequences of not responding to the exceptional circumstance could be disastrous. Uh, so, they're gonna have some conversations with the railroad, and we're gonna make sure that we have a process in place that, uh, gets everybody acting in a timely fashion to make sure that we're not walking around and around in thigh-high water trying to get the, the gates closed. The, um, on the north side of the gate, there's a drainage problem. Uh, and water's still standing there, so if you've driven up since we've opened the gates and removed the mud, you can still see standing water. Where the culvert that goes under both the UP and Burlington railroads, uh, doesn't have anywhere to go anymore because the field is silted up, so there's, there's no discharge for that water. Uh, it's gonna be a combined efforts of the city, the both railroads, and let the, the Levy District and private property owners to reestablish the drainage way so that that culvert can function properly. And, uh, it, I called the guy with UP, the guy that we used to deal with at Burlington has been replaced, so we don't know who the new contact is, but supposedly he does. And he's gonna coordinate, uh, a, a meeting out in the field so we can talk about who needs to do what, when, where, and how. Master Gardeners, uh, asked for, um, a yard hydrant up behind Station Two. They used to use Serra's ice cream water tap, and it's got problems. Uh, we have an old meter base sitting there, uh, and Steve told me we, we, we have a yard hydrant in stock, so we can, we can make sure they get water to maintain that garden area, uh, without any, any problem or any, any extra expense, so Steve was gonna, gonna get that installed for us.
Martin?
Yes?
Can that be locked, that it can't be used other?
You can lock the yard hydrant?
Yeah, it's got a lock for that one.
And, uh, finally, uh, just an update, the Dollar General store has picked up their grading plans, so they should be starting some work pretty soon now on Highway thirty-two.
Questions, go ahead. Don't have any staff reports this week, so we'll write any committee reports. Tom, would you like to talk about the tree?
The inaugural meeting of the downtown tree committee, uh, met earlier this week. Um, I'd like to thank Mayor Grumager and City Administrator Toma for being there and having, spending their time in this meeting, as well as Martin's and your staff did a great job getting some, a lot of preliminary work done, as you can see the, the pictures around the room. The post-it notes are in top secret code, uh, but, so good luck to figure out what that, what that means. Uh, Beth Caldwell, uh, took notes as we went around the room, looked at each picture and identified, uh, the trees that are there now, uh, the trees that everyone agrees will have to come out, there's just not enough room there, there's no, no reason to replace a tree in that spot, uh, due to a variety of factors, the, the main factor being ADA compliance with thirty-six inches of sidewalk. So, when we looked at the number of trees that, that need to come out, we also identified a, a large number of spots where there is an opportunity for a tree to go in. Uh, that will take a lot of coordination with property owners, and, but we're, we're gonna do that work and make that approach and see if we can't come out with either no net loss of the number of trees or a small net loss of the number of trees. We talked about a variety of trees. We have got, uh, some very educated people on this committee, uh, from the University of Missouri Extension staff as well as citizens elected, and they're giving us some very good guidance, and everybody's kinda got their, their own, uh, area to protect. Uh, the citizens, uh, fellows, you know, they're really concerned about the things that affect overhead power lines, and the, the city, of course, we're concerned about things that affect, uh, underground utilities and, uh, safety. So, it was a very good first meeting. Beth Caldwell picked together a really nice template for us to go off of in the, in the next meeting. So, it was very productive, and I think that we're gonna, uh, come out with the things that will be the, the best possible answer, but probably won't satisfy everybody's concerns. So, I think that's gonna be very difficult. So, then we'll present that to you guys.
We have it scheduled, the next meeting, uh, because we're gonna, Beth's gonna get this done, we're gonna find a way to get that information on a map, overhead, so there are, so people can kinda have visual images.
Each one of the post-it notes will, will be on an overhead map, so everybody can go around and, and really look at these things, and we have questions, we'll be able to get Martin to come out, and Martin can bring in, Dave if he chose, and you guys will all be also be able to walk around and take a look. So, we're taking a very, uh, direct approach at trying to resolve this issue, and hopefully we'll get it resolved for, in five more years, we won't have to go through this again, or ten more years we won't have to go through it again. So, nice job for, for everybody involved.
Another interesting op, option we're gonna investigate is a permeable paving surface so that you can relay, uh, the walkway, but the water goes right through what looks like concrete, and, uh, provides a, a walking surface that's, and, and, and you can maybe in some of these tight areas, we could still have a tree without, uh, sacrificing the, the ADA compliance that we need to preserve.
Trying to move this thing as we went through it, trying to at least look at the option of moving as many trees as we could on the, on a private property. If, if the people will work with us and do that, that would be, um, then we wouldn't have, have to worry about the sidewalk issue, period.
And we have, obviously, we have budgetary constraints, so this, we're trying to think beyond, uh, what we can do right away, and, and have a phased approach to the, to the issue.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Alright, we're going to, uh, approve the amendments of the May twenty-third meeting.
Move to approve second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, uh, Resolution two thousand thirteen, number twenty-five, a resolution reappointing Phil Ideman to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
Move to approve second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And Resolution two thousand thirteen, twenty-six, a resolution reappointing Barbara Abashan to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
Motion to approve second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We have known old business, new business. Bill number thirty-nine, twenty-four, first reading.
An ordinance amending Schedule Three Parking Restrictions, Table Three dash A, no parking at any time of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
This is, uh, this is the east side of Blaine Street from Market to Highway sixty-one. Eric, you wanna state the case?
Yeah, I, uh, I was approached by a couple of aldermen, uh, but in addition to that, I was actually on the scene of both incidents. Uh, in the last couple of months, we've had, uh, two EMS calls on Blaine Street, and with the, the width of Blaine Street with a car parked on, on both sides of Blaine is, is really too narrow. Assuming both cars are, are right against the curb, it's, it's right at ten feet, which is really kinda pushing the, uh, the width for getting emergency equipment, a fire truck or ambulance, uh, through that street. So, um, I, I went and polled the residents, the ones that I could get a hold of, I contacted the majority of the residents on Blaine Street. Uh, most were in favor or indifferent. Uh, there were a couple that were opposed, one of which, um, pointed out, she lived in the neighborhood for twenty-something years. Uh, she was there when the, uh, city went through and remodeled a few years ago and, and upgraded the streets there, and pointed out what she believed was the, the actual property lines for the street. Uh, so she was, she was opposed to a parking restriction, uh, agreeing that it is at least a temporary fix, one that will, will bring headaches of its own, and that the cars that aren't able to park there will, will be, uh, likely parking on the opposite side of the street and causing problems for the residents that live on that side of the street. Um, I would like to point out that every house on the street does have off-street parking. It is, to my knowledge, every one is, is a single, uh, vehicle with driveway, so, you know, we're not looking at double, double driveways or, or room to, to stack cars in there without backing them in and out, so, you know, that was definitely a concern. Uh, however, the driveways are also set up in a way that, that stagger between houses, so really anywhere a person would park on the west side of the street, uh, would likely be right opposite a driveway, so somebody backing out would have, uh, increased difficulties backing out. Uh, so I, I, I listened to, to the resident for, for quite a while, and she brought up some really good points. Uh, you know, I just think ultimately, we're not really gonna have in our budget, I mean, I wouldn't be in a position to, to propose looking at, at remodeling the street at this time to, to actually, uh, utilize the right of way that the city has according to her, uh, evaluation of that. You know, obviously, I'm not a city engineer or anything, I'm not proposing that I am, but, uh, she, she brought up some valid points. Um, I, I think if we push the, the, the no parking recommendation for the west, or the east side of the street, uh, that would likely be the direction that EMS or fire would be responding from sixty-one, so that would eliminate the parking on the right hand as you're, as you're pulling onto Blaine Street. Uh, we could utilize the residential parking permits that we passed within the last year for the people that live there, so even if it is a parking restriction, uh, hopefully if we limit the amount of people parking on the street, allow them to park with a parking permit, hopefully that would eliminate a situation where somebody would have a lot of friends over and there's a lot of excess cars at the residence parked overnight or parked on the, on the east side of the street because they wouldn't have the residential parking permit that would allow them to park there. Um, but of course, that would be on an application basis, so just trying to look at a way that we can feasibly, uh, ensure the safety of the residents up there and, and be able to get the emergency equipment through that we would need to, uh, without a tremendous expense to the city.
This is, uh, Gretzmauker, that's the woman to whom you refer.
Correct.
She came and visited today and asked me to use her name.
Okay. I was hesitant because I didn't know.
And, and, and expressed many of the things that, that you just described. Uh, a couple of things that I'd like to add from her comments, so, because I committed to her that I would make sure all of her concerns were heard, was she thinks that, uh, doing this will create conflict among the neighbors as they battle for parking lots or parking spots. She, she, she thinks doing it will make it impossible for people to come visit because there will be fewer parking spots than, than, than residents need, much less anyone who might come to visit, and, and she believes that the installation of this parking restriction would devalue the property. Uh, and I can't comment on any of that because I don't know neighbors and I don't know how many people live in each house, and, uh, but, uh, but those were, were also concerns of hers that she expressed to me today.
I spoke with her also. We were on the phone for about fifteen, twenty minutes.
And, and I, yeah, and my purpose for contacting them was to give them an opportunity to let them know about the meeting tonight, if they had an opinion, to come down and, and voice that, and I don't know if anybody's here from, from Blaine Street, uh, but I wanted to give them the opportunity, you know, we didn't wanna try to, try to strong-arm anything here or push something through and sneak it through, you know, and just put up some no parking signs one day. I wanted to give them the opportunity. Uh, like I said, most of the people that I, that I talked to there were in favor of it. Uh, most of their complaints were, as I mentioned, being able to back out of the driveway without hitting a car parked directly behind their driveway. Um, however, you know, I, I thought that Ms. Gretzmauker brought up some very good points. I, I don't know the best solution for that, but I wanted to, to present that to you guys and see.
You said, one of the things that she mentioned was that people don't always park, particularly parallel to the center line of the road and up against the curb.
Right.
So, you know, it's hard to do. Uh, and I think you already addressed this, but one of the thoughts that occurred to me is it could be strike so that people see where they have to park within in order to do that, but your, your basic statement was, even if they do that, there's, you don't have a full lane width.
Correct.
Cars probably park...
It's, it's, it's right at ten feet. It, and the roadway itself is, is twenty-two feet wide from curb to curb, uh, and the measurements that I was able to get that day, uh, I parked my car on one side opposite another car that was parked very close to the curb, and, and it was right at ten feet. I drive an Explorer, which isn't a terribly, terribly wide vehicle compared to some of the others, but, uh, but it is, it is definitely pushing. I know for the Zerofet tents and boots and whatnot, we require ten feet of clearance, uh, to, to be able to get emergency equipment down through there if we need to. So, we had that there. Typically with Zerofet, it's a straight-line shot where Blaine is not straight on any ten feet of the road. I mean, there's, there's curves on both sides, and, um, so it, it's not an ideal situation for, for just the ten feet. I mean, my recommendation would be, if we can find a way to increase the ten feet, we should do it, uh, like I said, without a major construction project, I think we're gonna be looking at, at some type of parking restriction, so, unless you guys, again, unless you have a suggestion.
How many residents are affected by this, you know, have parking on the east side?
There are, the, the first house on Blaine from sixty-one would, I don't believe, would be affected at all. Uh, right now, there was two or three vacant houses up there. I would say seven houses altogether are on the east side. Uh, one, one faces Market Street but has, has Blaine Street parking, they have a garage. Uh, so I, I would say six or seven houses may be affected by that.
On east side?
On the east side.
They're all gonna be affected by that.
Exactly, the entire neighborhood would be affected both sides because if, if we're eliminating parking on one side, uh, as previously mentioned, there's a possibility that they would be parking on the opposite side. Uh, but there again, I, I do wanna stress that every house does have off-street parking. We wouldn't be depriving anybody that, that's their only parking, uh, accommodations. However, it's probably not ideal off-street parking in that they couldn't stack two cars next to each other, uh, just with...
Lots of about fifty-foot widths.
That's what, that's what I assume.
She mentioned that the road was lowered back when it was replaced.
It used to be more level.
They lost about nine feet of, eight to nine feet of width in the road.
In spots.
Yeah, that, I remember that before it was redone, and, and oftentimes, people parked kinda in their yards, or they had little, they had little gravel areas just in their front yards off the street, and so that was all eliminated whenever they did the curb and gutter in the street, but I was told that that was the street right-of-way, the property of the city, that twenty-two feet. But she said it wasn't. She said the street right-of-way could have been five foot...
Were they vertical curbs or rolling curbs?
Rolling curbs.
Oh, they, they're vertical, I'm sorry, yes.
They're ninety degrees, yeah. I'm surprised she's not here. Did you tell her?
She, she said that she would not be able to...
Yeah, she knew about it, she just couldn't get you...
That's why she wanted us to express her, her concerns. Uh, and, and I explained to her, you know, it's not something that would likely be voted in in one meeting and that she'd have another opportunity to come, but, uh, I think, I think, uh, City Administrator Toma... City Administrator Toma and myself have addressed every concern that she presented to us. You know, obviously, it's not as effective as it would be coming from her. And she was very well informed, right, and brought up good points, and she told me, you know, I understand why you're doing this, and just understand that this is not the permanent solution. You know, I understand why the city's looking at doing this, and obviously, public safety is going to take precedence here, but, you know, there is another issue that she wanted us to know about, so.
Blaine is a problem.
Ever since they fixed it.
Well, I remember there was a lot of discussion with that whole street whenever we did it, as far as what was going to, what was going to happen, and while those people were here.
Well, I didn't let the buses go through there anymore.
That's right.
Because I think there might have even been a mirror or two taken off.
Yes.
Because that, did you, did you measure from the end of your mirror? Did you measure the body?
I just measured from tire to tire.
Okay, so you got, what, six inches?
Six inches.
Some mirrors are eight or 10 inches, you know?
I mean, early in the mornings, when Mississippi line, I don't have a good solution to get on emergency call. I can't use Chazalane.
Right.
Can't use Blaine. I got to go down through town.
I got to go down through town. You know, another one of her, just, I'm not going to say concern, just another point she brought up, you know, just the demographic of the neighborhood right now, several of them have mid-teenager kids that are going to be driving in the next couple of years and will be increased, number of cars parked there, so.
The vacant houses are likely to be occupied.
Vacant houses are likely to be occupied.
That's a point.
And again, one of her big concerns was just the property damage, or the property values, you know, the potential of losing, losing property value there. Obviously, it's not something we can necessarily anticipate or...
Well, if emergency vehicles can't get down the street, that would affect the property value as well.
Yeah.
And that does happen, because that happened one morning with me.
And back...
I tried going...
Yeah, I had to back it out and back it back in so they could get in one time.
One thing you'll notice that her husband has always parked on the...
On the curb. Yeah, he actually pulls up on their part of the yard. And hers, I think, from what it looked like, was one of the wider parts that would, that would allow for that. You know, I think it, I don't think it's a true five feet everywhere on that side of the road. I think with the curb, you know, it kind of goes in and out on where she says the property line may be, just based on the phone calls there and the electric calls.
So does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion was made.
Your motion was set, okay.
Thank you.
This is the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Aye.
I think we should just make sure she's aware of what was happening.
I've got her number. I'm going to, I'll call her and invite her to make sure she's here for the next move.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you catch that call?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Okay, bill number 3925, First reading.
An ordinance creating a pedestrian crossing on Pine Drive.
We're talking about, on the...
Eric is responsible.
From the hospital to that hospital employee parking lot there by the, by the firehouse.
Oh.
There's already signage there.
Yeah.
I believe there was crosswalks before we redone Pine Street. I was just asking to get those reinstalled. And like I said, the signage is already there in that location, so.
A lot of people cross through there all the time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
I don't think it's a big deal, is it? I would go for a second reading. Motion is for a second reading.
Okay. Got second one? John's second. All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
Propose? Okay, second reading, bill number 3925.
An ordinance creating a pedestrian crossing on Pine, I think it's supposed to be street, so I'll change that.
Right.
Whatever the apple changes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Roll call?
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brinkfield?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 3925 now becomes ordinance 3865.
Thank you. Bill number 3926, First reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Jokers Incorporated in the amount of $180,593.70 for the St. Genevieve Portis Street Improvement Project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Do we need a second reading tonight?
That would be good, if they want to get started.
Can we move, do I say move for a second?
Yes, you want to.
Yeah, move for a second?
Second.
All in favor, second reading of number 29, or 3926?
Aye.
Propose? Okay, second reading, bill number 3926.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Jokers Incorporated in the amount of $180,593.70 for the St. Genevieve Portis Street Improvement Project.
Approved. Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Alderwoman Brinkfield?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 3926 now becomes ordinance 3866.
Okay, thank you. This time, any, entertain any public comments? Anybody like to address the board? Okay. We'll go to any other business. I'd just like to say, especially walking around, looking at this tree project, I really like to commend the master gardeners and all the people that take care of the gardens around town. I mean, it's, I guess citizens maybe today took the rest of the trees down on Market Street, and you look down there, it's pretty bare, but thank God, those gardens are there on Third Street and all those bumpouts that we've got. And I mean, they're, they are really beautiful. I couldn't imagine that, that being just all asphalt and concrete down there. They do an excellent job, spend an awful lot of time, and those things really look good, and they really need to be commended as far as what they do. Same way at the entrances to town, people do a very nice job, spend an awful lot of time doing that.
As well as the Florida League Garden Club is involved as well.
Yeah, all those. Anybody else, any other comments?
Move to adjourn.
No, we need to go into closed session.
Mayor, I have a few things to say. When are we going to get started back on the project down on Market Street at my house?
Mr. Toma, we'll be talking to you in the next couple of days.
The next couple of days? Okay. Now, is this going to be covered by the city, or is this being covered by an engineer, or?
We'll have that discussion with the engineer, but one way or the other, we're going to take care of the problem.
Take care of it, okay. Hopefully, that takes care of it. If not, we may have to do some wall or something back there to stop some of that water.
All right.
We'll look and see.
I'll show you what we've come up with. Do you already know?
No, I don't know.
It's an area inlet on the east corner of your house.
Mm-hmm.
Which would be the box with the open throat that we talked about.
Uh-huh.
And then a flared-end section, which isn't the box in the ground, but it's a, you know, it's like a cone-shaped collector for the west side of your house to get tie into the storm sewer.
Okay.
So he's calculated the volumes and come up with the engineered solution. So, and the board, in our work session prior to this, authorized me to proceed.
Okay.
So I'll, when I get the drawings from him, I'll come back and show him.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I'd like to go into closed session to talk about real estate and personnel. How do you go?
Go into closed session?
Huh?
Go into closed session?
Second.
Oh. Oh. Okay.
Withdraw.
The pipe that goes to the new sewer lines hasn't been capped yet.
Pardon me?
That four-inch pipe that goes to the new sewer line hasn't been capped yet.
Okay.
And I was just curious what you was going to do with the pipes by my porch.
That one I'll have to come look at tomorrow. But at the same work session that I mentioned with Ms. Higgins, they asked me to hire, or get one of the people who specialize in making basements dry to come in and evaluate your basement, to come up with a system that will ensure you have a dry basement.
Because I've never had water in my basement till the Fourth of May.
Pardon me?
I've never had water flood my basement since the Fourth of May.
We believe.
Yeah.
But I'll be contacting you when I get hold of somebody who can come in and evaluate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Speaking in, I want to get more in basically, yes, speaking.
Okay, I think we had a motion, a second. Okay, roll call?
Alderman Couch?
Here.
Did you go in the call?
Oh, yes. I didn't know what I was, I didn't know what we were doing.
I know, I was like, what are we doing?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brinkfield?
Yes.
Thank you for watching Channel 798. Hi, thank you very much for watching Channel 798.